I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation. One nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing for prayer. This evening in our county, Heavenly Father, we come thank you for this day. Again, we come thank you for bringing us to this county council meeting, blessing each and every one of these citizens here and each and every one of these government officials. We ask that you continue to bless Chester County and continue to keep it, keep us going in a prosperous, uh, direction. We ask that you continue to watch over this county, watch over each and every municipality in this county and each and every person. These and all other things, in the name of your son Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Okay, moving to number three there, approval of the minutes for February the 5th. I'd like to get a motion on that.
I move that we approve the, uh, February 5th council minutes.
All right, need a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? You're none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote on that. Okay, moving along to, uh, citizens, uh, what we're gonna have, well, citizens' comments and the, uh, zoning request also. We got one signed up for against zoning requests, Mr. Stephen Persons.
I have, I was signed up for citizens' comment, John Massey.
Yes, sir, we're gonna get you next.
I thought that was the third on your agenda, that's why. Boy, I mean, I'm not trying to butt in.
So that...
Go by the agenda.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Steve Person, retired Army. My apart, my house is on 744 Spirit Circle, and we're concerned about the Trent LLC, which means limited liability corporation or company, building on Fernwood, which will probably affect us in the housing, um, value, not to mention that we're concerned that he bought this property with RS1, knowing that was what it was, and now he's trying to get it changed to put some cheaper quality houses there. I'd like to thank whoever it was that did come down and review the area bef, uh, sometime last month or this, earlier this month. At least we now have somebody that knows what we're looking at. Uh, it's a dead-end street in poor condition, and we would like to be able to limit the amount of traffic on that small road. As it is now, most of the folks, including another couple that's here, have to park on the 16-foot wide road, and up on the hill, a little further up, there's one gentleman who has four vehicles who park on the side of the road, and then at the end of the road, it's a dead end. There's no way to go through, nowhere to turn around. Uh, we're hoping that you can understand what we're trying to do here. The fact that it's a limited liability company or corporation means if they build something that's what I consider substandard, not a regular house with a regular concrete foundation like ours and the, uh, other family that's here with us, uh, that this could cause problems for whoever buys that property, and as being a former soldier for this country and a corrections officer, I do not wish to see somebody else lose what they have when we have a heavy rain. I think I mentioned once before that I had to put in a French drain that ran all the way around my house on the outside of my back driveway because coming down the hill in a regular good storm, the rain is about this deep because it doesn't soak into the red clay, and that goes into the road and then down the street to Spirit Circle and then washes across into another ditch, which neither have been maintained by the county. I don't know if it's your responsibility or the state's because the road's in such bad shape, but, uh, I'm hoping that you'll consider this before approving the LLC, uh, corporation being able to put up substandard housing. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Person. All right now, on the citizens' comments, Mr. John Massey.
I'm, uh, John Massey, 171 East Lacy Street. Well, I know who you are, probably know why you're here. I will listen to whatever you have to say, but our policy is not respond. Leader in local government here in Chester County told me that years ago. His policy of no response does not serve the public at all. So it's only those in power who may have a pre-existing or private agenda. I was, last time I stood here, it was for veterans, still is. This time it's cops. These five lives lost in the line of duty, Chester City and County law enforcement. Where is it you honor them? Here in Chester County, where is their photograph, their memorial? One, I consider a friend, William C. Doster, and another Officer James Bryce Waters. May the 9th, 1970, were blown away by a man with a 12-gauge shotgun. Another officer, Doc Thorpe, was seriously injured. Deputy Sheriff Danny Michael Laws died in a traffic accident, October 10th, 1980. War Wilson, couldn't find a photo of him. He was a rookie cop. He would've been my just-up-the-street neighbor had I been alive back then. His end of watch, May the 9th, 1891, result of an argument over a prostitute shot by her pimp. Killer got away. James K. Marshall, only had one eye, shot in the head by a man trying to pass a bad check near what is today Chester County Post Office. Killer was hanged not long after. Closing, all I'm asking is for you to really listen to people, respond. No matter how insignificant you think they or their petition may be, honor those who deserve it. Veterans who fought and died so you and your family could live out your American dream. And cops who try to protect you, while you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
All right, moving along to ordinance resolutions and proclamations, uh, under A, the second reading of 2024-2, amending ordinance, uh, 2021-8 to adopt to the county's general fund balance policy and provide for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I move that we approve the second reading of 2024-2.
Second.
I got a motion in the second. Uh, any discussion or comment?
Mr. Chair, if you will, uh, a couple of council members, uh, last time wanted to hear from our treasurer, uh, related to these, um, um, ordinance changes regarding, uh, funds and fund balances, and he is here tonight, uh, ready to answer any questions as well.
Okay, Mr. Darby?
Good evening. So, um, I guess just in summary, this, um, fund balance policy was established originally in 2021, I believe, with, with an ordinance. Uh, the ordinance was necessary, but it did not, um, define how those funds, once they reached that certain level, how they would be accounted for, so this policy or ordinance update, um, addresses that, so it updates the, the ordinance to, um, create a capital reserve fund. So once we hit that threshold, um, those funds will be moved over to that capital reserve fund, um, for, to be accounted for, so that's basically the, the main part of the change, um, from, from this ordinance. Um, just to give you some numbers, um, from our last fiscal year completed, our fund balance is at nineteen million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-one cent. That represents about 61.7% of our, um, fund balance, or of our general fund expenditures, and so that capital reserve fund, um, as it's stated in this, uh, updated ordinance would be about 3.7 million dollars.
Any further questions from any of the council members?
And at what point would that get moved from general fund to that, to that...
So, so once we have our final audited, um, our financial, audited financial statements, we would move that based on that audited financial statement number.
When do you anticipate that being?
Should be soon, within the next month. Um, we have until March 31st to get that completed, should be soon, so...
How much was the total fund balance when we appro, when y'all approved this? You know, what, somewhere 25 million is sticking in my head?
Um, no, sir, our fund balance at the time was probably around, um, it was about 40% of our expenditure, so it was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 12, 12 million dollars or so.
And use theirs, what, 19...
Yeah, when I first started, our fund balance was, was kind of going the wrong direction, um, so, um, I think when I first started, it was 6 million dollars, and in that, that fiscal year, we lost 2 million or so, um, so the county kind of made some measures to correct that fund balance, and this, this ordinance really was to protect the county, um, from, from that happening again.
I think you've done a wonderful job. My, my question though is, there's a, somewhere in the deal, there was something about mileage could be set to maintain it or something like that. Can you refresh my memory?
So, so I think one of the thoughts, um, then, and we kind of discussed this with Department of Revenue, is if the county has a fund balance policy and the, the county's fund balance falls below a certain level, then, then that policy would allow them to adjust, um, through, through some means to get that back to a, um, certain level, and so I think that was part of it originally, just as a protection for the county.
Yeah, I thought so. I thought there was a mechanism put in place to make sure we maintained a fund balance at a, at a level that would secure the county.
Yeah, and right now, I think the way the ordinance, which didn't change between these amendments, was 25%, was kind of that minimum number.
Right.
With, with a 50% maximum, Mr. Darby, thus the creation of the...
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve.
Any further questions for Mr. Darby? Thank you, Mr. Darby.
All right, thank you.
All right, we got a motion in the second there, uh, any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, under B, the second reading of 2024-3, provided for the allocations of fees received from the developed agreement, project agreements, and other simple arrangements entered into by the county or one or more developers and providing for other related matters.
I make a motion, we approve second reading of 2024-3.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion or comments on that?
Mr. Chair, yes, sir, there was one change from the first reading to this reading, and that's just, uh, the addition of section three, um, the reservation to the county, uh, which, let me pull it up. Actually, it was, I'm looking at the wrong copy, but section three added that, uh, I have to have, that I have to inform council, uh, in the event I use the aggregate 5%, which was a request last week.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, comments on that?
Out of curiosity, Mr. Heston?
Yes, sir.
With the situation we have with the store having no more allocation, does this really mean anything?
Well, it does for the, um, you, are you speaking in reference to the projects that have already been approved and the...
All, all of that's done, but this is proposed for new development.
No, sir, this is for all the fees that we have in place currently, as, as well as anything in the future, so this will stand. Yes, sir.
All right, have you no more questions? Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote on that one. Okay, under C, the second reading of 2024-4, amending chapter two of administration, article four, offices and employees, division five, county attorneys of the code of ordinance of Chester County to provide for the position of county attorney and other related matters.
I move we approve second reading of 2024-4.
Okay, got Mr. Vaughn made the order, Mr. Darby.
I'll second.
Second it there. Any discussion or questions on that one? You're none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, under D, the second reading of 2024-5, providing for the allocations of fund held in the county's capital project fund and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I make a motion, we approve second reading of 2024-5.
Can you do the second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Guy, any comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chair, again, there's one change since first reading, and that's section three, reporting requirement, this council directs the county administrator to report no less than quarterly to the council regarding any, if any, discretionary spending, uh, as described in section one made by the county administrator during the prior quarter, again, where it allows me the aggregate of 5% of the balance of the capital project fund per, per year.
Out of curiosity, do you, is that going to be in conjunction with the county treasurer?
Yes, sir. I, I can assure you, I don't do anything with our money without conjunction with, uh, Mr. Darby back there.
All righty. Uh, you got a motion in the second on that with those changes, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Under E, first reading of, uh, 2024-6, to amend chapter two, administration article two, Chester County, section, uh, two dash 26 dash clerk, the, uh, of the code, of the ordinance of off the, uh, Chester County, South Carolina. Need a motion on that.
I make a motion, uh, to amend chapter two, uh, administration article two, Chester County, section two, dash two six, clerk of the code of ordinance off the county, of the, of the county of Chester, South Carolina.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Second, Ms. Bosley, any discussion or comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, just as a, a matter of information, the, the changes that were made, uh, regarding this ordinance related specifically to the change in form of government from supervisor to administrator, as well as, uh, council's request for sort of a hybrid, um, system of accountability, if you will, where the clerk reports to council, but with regard to day-to-day, uh, activities, uh, time off requests, payroll issues and so forth, that I will handle those things, uh, for efficiency purposes.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, you no more comments? Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, uh, first reading of, uh, 2024-7, uh, revoking existing employees' personnel handbooks, related in employment policies and procedures and their related enabling ordinances and resolution, adopting an employee's personal handbook confirming the county administrator's authority to set administrative employment policies and procedures, making conforming changes to the county code of ordinance and providing for other related matters.
I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of 2024-7, title only.
I might, I second that.
Got, got a motion in the second, any, any comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, again, if you'll allow me, um, so this, just so all members of council are fully aware, this will, this, uh, ordinance will revoke all previous employee handbooks, policies that were related to it, um, and, and any changes that were made leading up to this point. We did it in title only to give you guys that book in front of you that you all have, 132 some odd pages, that you'll be able to, uh, take that. The changes are all in red and blue, um, and we just color-coded them based on the type of change that they were, but, uh, feel free to read it all or feel free to read the changes, but most, the most obvious changes had to do with form of government, some human re, uh, in the beginning, human release, resources, related items, just getting, um, basically updated on legal and so forth, wording, uh, laws, and then there's some change to our procurement, um, the next ordinance that relates to that next ordinance with the P-card policy and procurement policy that had to change in this handbook as well, and then with a little bit with regard to our discipline policy, so, um, I... The, the bottom part of this, or, or as part of that ordinance, Mr. Kuzlar, um, we're making it to where council can change it in the future by resolution?
Correct.
Okay, and so that's just, right now, it has to be an ordinance, we're changing, where you have the ability to make a resolution for a change because there's an employee handbook, sometimes this is a living, breathing document, that 132 pages, and I can assure you that if you read through it and you see other things, we're not done, but we needed to get to a point to approve the other ordinances to where we could at least bring it before council and give the most updated version. So you will see as we go throughout this year, some more changes to the employee handbook as we continue to update all the sections.
So that being a live and breathing, uh, uh, piece of, of resolution that it can be done by one, one reading, correct?
In the future, if you, if this makes it through the three readings, then yes, sir.
All righty.
At the end of the day, though, this should wipe out pretty much the old supervisor form of government.
Yes, sir, and any ordinances or anything that was related to that, that had to do with employee handbook and the policies within this book, it'll all be cleared.
Starting on the first slate.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further comments or questions? You're none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, moving along to G, the first reading of, uh, 2024-8, title only, revoking procurement contract and policies, handbooks, and manuals and related policies and procedures and their related enabling ordinances, adopting a procurement contractual manner, including the use of purchasing card, confirming the county's administrator's authority to set administrative policies and procedures, making conforming changes to the county code of ordinance and providing for other related matters.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, first reading of 2024-8, title only.
Title only, got, uh, got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any comments or questions on that?
Yes, sir, again, one more time, Mr. Chairman, um, so you have two other attachments or, or documents that are in front of you tonight. One of them is the procurement policy, which we did update, um, back in 2023, uh, somewhat, but the changes related to purchasing cards, um, those changes are in here, plus there was a couple of other, uh, changes related to our project manager, with the hiring of a project manager, some of the notifications and so forth, or who was responsible for certain things changed for that to be the project manager. I only gave you the parts or the pages of the procurement policy that have changes on them, those are redlined, uh, in the attachments that you all have, and the red line over on the right side is the change, and then it'll be marked through, uh, in the body of it, so if you want the full procurement policy, I can provide that for you, but I thought for simplicity's sake, I'd provide you this. The other document that you have that relates to this ordinance as well is the, what we call the P-card policy, and it's the purchasing card policy, and basically what the purchasing card policy is, um, is that we're adopting a policy to issue purchasing cards to, um, department directors, uh, and certain elected officials, uh, as well as their staff, um, for efficiency, uh, and purchasing, um, and it outlines the requirement, the use, the policy is very well written, Mr. Darby and his staff has spent, uh, and Ms. Coak, they've all spent a tremendous amount of time working on this over the last probably six months this has been a project, um, and this, the P-card is, it's, um, Mr. Darby, you want to come up and say anything about it? It might be better if you kind of explain how it works on the back end. It's a whole system that will, um, any purchase on here will take the place of our current purchasing practices.
Yeah, so, so you should have a copy of the policy, and I, I really just invite you to read through it. We spent a lot of time going through, um, really with the purpose of streamlining our purchasing process for small purchases, um, as a, you know, a department head, you know, it, it might take two days to purchase a pencil, um, you know, and that's, that's not really efficient, so, um, this provides a, a mechanism for the departments to make some of those small purchases without getting bogged down in paperwork, um, and so on the back end, um, you know, we'll work with, with the bank on these purchases, um, from an approval standpoint, the departments and, uh, Mr. Hester will have to approve these transactions, and there's a reconciliation process. All that is outlined in, in the policy, it's very detailed, um, so it really puts, puts a lot of weight on the department heads to, to make sure they're uploading their documents, um, and getting those transactions approved and obviously paid. Um, from a cash flow standpoint, um, a normal credit card gives you roughly 30 days to get it paid, this gives you 45, so it's, uh, it's easier to get it processed, um, get all those documentation, um, documents together and, um, get the, get the transactions paid, so anyway, it's, it's an efficient process, um, I invite you to read the policy, it's, it's very detailed in, in responsibility and, and reconciliation of, of the cards and transactions, so I feel comfortable with it, and I think, uh, we worked, you know, many, many, many hours, um, trying to put it together, so I would invite, you know, obviously criticism, cri, you know, um, anything that you see that you might not, um, like, obviously, we want to hear from, from, from you on that as well, so, um, I feel good with it and just invite you to read it.
Quick, quick question on that, uh, you say, he said elected, certain elected officials, said sheriff and a coroner.
So, so it would be open to, to any elected officials, um, and department heads, supervisors, um, Mr. Hester will kind of go through, we've kind of gone through a list of, of those who would, would actually get it, um, probably starting out, it'll be a small pool, just so we get the system worked out, and then it would be open to department, um, directors under Mr. Hester's control and also elected officials, whoever wants it.
And we have had those, Mr. Ed, we've had those discussions, um, with most elected officials, some want it, some don't want it, um, some may choose the, to want it later on, and that's okay, we can, we can add people to it, and, uh, you know, just like the sheriff's office, we've had discussion with sheriff's office, and they're going to tell us how many they need because they can, you know, chief deputy back there, he can give it to his department directors as well, so it, it makes our, the other thing it really does for us, it helps us with travel and training and going out of the county for things, it gives us a more efficient way of tracking and handling.
Any further questions for Mr. Darby? You're none, thanks for Mr. Darby for that explanation. Okay, moving along to number six on the agenda, administrator's report, Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just have a couple of brief things. Mr. Jay Williams couldn't be here tonight and sent me a, a text earlier today and just wanted me to provide counsel.
Mr. Hester, um, we...
I'm sorry.
Oh, never voted on that. Okay, all right, we'll back up and get that there, we hadn't, we didn't vote on the, uh, the reading of 2024-8, so all, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All righty, all right, now moving along.
We got a little ahead of ourselves, didn't we?
We don't want to repeat.
All right, so Mr. Williams, uh, Mr. Jay Williams reached out me, to me today, and he was busy tonight and couldn't make it, but wanted me to, uh, let council know and the community know of the positive progress that's happening on the site where the Lewis Fire Substation's being built, uh, said that, uh, the stone is being set for the building foundation, uh, as we, as we speak today and this week, so I thought that was very positive news and a little update, and then, um, also, he reminded me, and I think it's important for us to all... And then also, he reminded me, and I think it's important for us to all remember, that this past weekend was a tragic weekend in our first responder community throughout our country. There were two firefighters lost in Minnesota, there were two police officers killed as well. And just remember the dangers that our first responders face and the service to our community. And when you see them, and sometimes it's a thankless job, but just remind, remember to say thank you to them, and remember the families of those that lost their lives, given the ultimate sacrifice. And then the last thing, I was in Columbia all day today with Legislative Connection Conference, and Ms. Brandon was down there as well, but some good information. And then tomorrow, I'll be there as well, following up, meeting with our legislators and different, there's a couple of good reports actually tomorrow that I'm looking forward to with regard to workforce housing. We've got a legislative panel discussion, and then South Carolina Economic Development's giving an update as well. So I think that's all, some good information looking forward to. That concludes my administrator's report this week. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that report. Okay, the under seven, we have A, B, C, and D here. We're going to vote on them all at one time, which concerns the Trent Urban for EP Group LLC request. So I'll take a motion to accept these, number seven, under A, B, C, and D, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we uphold a planning commission and deny the readings of CCMA 24-2, -3, -4, and -5.
Need a second?
Second.
Any comment?
Good discussion?
You hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. All right, aye. Unanimous vote. Okay. Under Old Business, the second reading of CCMA 24-1, Crystal and Michael Carley request tax map 079-04-02-098-000, located at 641 Laxton Highway, just to South Carolina, 29706, to be resold from single-family residential district RS1 to general commercial district GC. Planning commission voted 60 to approve contingent on the closing of the property must be by April the 1st, 2024. If property has not closed by April the 4th, 2024, the zoning would revert back to RS1.
I'll make a motion. We approve CCMA 24-01, second reading.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Second, by the way, Mr. Wilson. Okay, all right, Mr. Wilson, second on that. Any discussion or comments on that? You hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous vote. Under New Business, approval of and acceptance of the Lutz Foundation grant, a grant in the amount of $20,000 to purchase two new drones and provide training and certification for drone operators. Sheriff Office is requesting a grant match of $5,000. Is Mr. Peoples here?
Yes, sir.
How you going, folks?
Here I am, yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening. We've received a $20,000 grant from the Lutz Foundation. We're here asking you to accept that and match it with a $5,000 grant match, grant match funds. These funds will be used to purchase two drones, a little smaller than what we have now, to add to our fleet to help out, and also provide training and certification for some new operators that we've identified within our department, and also some other county emergency departments.
Okay. The deal on this, that the $5,000 has nothing to do with the $20,000 that the Lutz Foundation dishes, additional and above that to make sure you get everything needed to.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I make a motion. We approve the $5,000 matching fund request for the sheriff's department.
A second.
With the $20,000.
I think we have to accept the Lutz $20,000 with the $5,000. Is that correct? All right, you need a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussions?
So the two smaller drones, tell us a little bit more about what that will do for you.
It will, right now, we have a really large drone and a really small drone. One's for interior, the small one, and then the large one, we use outdoors, of course, search and rescue, different things. This would just allow us to have more eyes in the sky, if you will. And the smaller drones, I feel a little better putting a less experienced operator with a smaller drone, and that way we can add to our team and be more effective.
Thank you.
But this drone here does much more, more high-tech than the ones that you already have, is that correct? Is hence, heat-sensitive and everything?
It's very close in technology. It's very close in capabilities.
Yeah. Well, that's about sixty or seventy thousand dollars' worth of money that you've gotten from a couple of nonprofit organizations to provide those instead of the county council having to spend county taxpayers' money for it. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir, that is correct. We appreciate the Hospital Foundation, and the Lutz Foundation has been a big supporter of this program.
Did this help find some of this shooting going on in Chester?
We use it for a lot of different things, so it's possible, yes, sir.
We need to have some, because there's a lot of shooting going on.
Yes, sir.
In my district.
All right, any further comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. All in favor of?
Is that money there? Is that, is that money there, that $5,000?
Yes, sir.
Anytime that they bring it before that, I think it's already been, Mr. Darby's already been in contact, and it is approved.
And you can be sure, and I appreciate you asking, but I promise you, we won't allow it on agenda if we don't have the matching funds.
All right. All in favor of accepting this $20,000 grant, and also the extra $5,000 to secure us being able to follow through with this? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, update regarding full-time firefighters with the Richburg Fire Department.
I'm T. Elton, Mike Herman Trout, our Assistant Chief. To touch on what you guys had just talked about, those drones are so helpful in so many different situations. We've had, lately, we've had quite a few wrecks where drivers have ran from vehicles, and they get those drones out very quickly. And it's such an amazing tool for so many different assets in this county. So I'm glad that they're able to find some other opportunities out there. We had a conversation with Mr. Hester a few weeks ago, and in that conversation, we thought we would just come to you guys and kind of give you an update on where we're at with the new hires and kind of where we're at this year as far as what we're doing with it. So at the end of this, there are a few videos I just want to show you. It's going to be very short. I applaud you for the quickness you've gotten through the agenda tonight, because it looked long when I looked at it. But just to give you an idea, we finished out 2023 with 1,146 calls. Everything going forward, we're going to talk about tonight, is between October 1st and February 14th. So October 1st, the significance of that is when we started hiring our full-time staff. We weren't fully staffed at that time, but that's the first, the first ones came on board then. It took us about a month and a half to get everyone hired and onboard. But during that time, between those dates, we've ran 456 calls. This just kind of gives you a breakout of what we've seen. And when you look at the EMS, that doesn't mean it's an EMS call. It means it's anything EMS-related. It could be a lift assist. It could be something where we're just out helping EMS, but it's a medically-involved call. Everything kind of tracks along the same. We typically, every year, we look back at the numbers, and over half of it is involving the medical side. So this kind of paints a little bit of a picture for you of where we're at with our responses. So the next thing we just kind of wanted to touch on, and this is all data that we looked at when we were trying to add some manpower at the station. You can look at the hourly breakdown of our call volume, and we do peak during the day, but it stays pretty consistent. Thankfully, people do go to sleep between 3:00 and 5:00, and they get a couple hours sleep. But there are still quite a few people out there. So you can also see the days of the week. We do peak a little bit, Tuesday to Thursday, but it's really kind of a flat line the other day. So you can't say one is any worse than the other. You'd think the weekends would be busier, but.
Isn't today Tuesday?
It is. All right, so to give you a little idea of the aid calls we have, there's two different types of aid that you talk about in fire service. You have an automatic aid, a mutual aid. Automatic aid is anything that we have an agreement with another department, or if we have, let's say, a structured fire, usually they'll send three or four departments at one time. That's an automatic aid. That original department gets on scene, sees they need more resources, they request it, that's a mutual aid. So kind of breaking out how during this time period of October 1st to February 14th, we've given automatic aid 28 times. We've received it, we've received mutual aid, I'm sorry, given mutual aid 16 times. We've received automatic aid 14 times, and we've had, we've received mutual aid seven times. So it kind of balances out. All the departments kind of depend on each other. There's just not enough manpower, you know, you can't hire enough people to meet the needs, so it's, we still have to depend on each other. Mike's going to take over here.
We didn't want to specifically spend all night talking about career staff without talking about our volunteers. Our volunteers still have a tremendous role in our fire department, as they do throughout the whole county. So we have a couple of things that we've done a little differently. One is we have started tracking what we call standby hours. What standby hours are, are volunteers who come down and do not get paid, but actually stay at the station. In some cases, we have several members who stay a full 24-hour shift. We have some that work, that will come down and just hang out for an hour or two, and we have some that will stay for quite an extended period of time. So it's kind of hard to show it by a line graph, because our hours were extremely skewed in 2022. We had a total of 4,441 hours of volunteer standby time. This is just somebody taking their time, hanging out, helping clean the station, and running calls. 2023, we had 2,558 hours, and so far in 2024, and this is just two months, we've had 597 hours. If we extrapolate that out, and if it stays consistent, that's going to total 3,600 hours of training, of standby time. One of the things that's really impressive about those numbers is that we have volunteers that are from other counties, we have volunteers from other areas that are coming and staying at the station. So it's really brought a lot of talent that is well beyond just the Chester County area. Response times, when we first started tracking response time, this is the time it takes from the moment the radio goes off, that 911 notifies that there is an incident, to the moment that that fire apparatus signs on the air. Starting in 2021, we've always set a goal of two minutes. NFPA 1710 is a national consensus standard. They set an 80-second or approximately 1 minute 30-second response time. So in 2021, we had a 3 minute 53-second response time average. 2022, it dropped down to 3 minutes and 28 seconds. 2023, it dropped to 2 minutes and 20 seconds. And in the timeframe that we're talking about, again, from October to currently, we've dropped that down to 2 minutes and 2 seconds. We do have a goal to continue to drop that number, and I am confident we will, we have a couple of things we're working on, that a station alerting system, that a light will go on for that 1 minute and 30 seconds. So when the light goes out, they know that they're, they need to move faster. We also have something that is not unique to the country, but it's unique certainly to our county, and that's called our resident volunteer program. We have two volunteers living in one of our station, our main station, actually, it's now one person, and we have two volunteers living in our substation. These volunteers sign a contract. They agree to work certain hours for, as a volunteer, but to stay at the station. They clean the station, they mow the lawn, they take care of the garbage, and it gives a presence at that station. I was amazed at how many people stop by and ask questions or need help on a regular basis at our stations. So in 2022, the main station, those volunteers ran 244 calls, and in 2023, at our main station, they ran 539 calls. At the substation, we had 367 calls combined in '22, and 247 calls combined in 2023.
And to kind of touch on the hours, the, we focus on the volunteers and the paid staff equally, and we've had a lot of success with the mating of the two together. So, but to give you an idea of how much time is spent, this is specifically on fire calls. The paid staff has spent 2,710 hours, the volunteers have spent 1,781 hours. So that's a lot of time standing on the side of the road or working, and, but that's a lot of, a lot of time that people have committed. Mr. Hester touched on something a little bit ago that kind of stole some of my thunder, but I'll kind of tag along with it.
We're going to make it bigger.
The, there was an article or story this week about some, several firefighters, nine firefighters in LA were injured. They had a truck that had an LP gas tank, it was an LP gas tower, gas-powered truck, explode. If you look at the two pictures, I'm sorry, the presentation is a little grainy, but this on the board behind you as well, this very truck that exploded on these guys three weeks ago, we were on the side of the interstate with one. And it will change the intensity of everything you're doing, because it's much more dangerous than everything we've, we'll come up on. But I've got a little video, if you haven't seen.
Echoes through this neighborhood.
The explosion.
Dramatic new security video just out, shows the sheer force of the explosion. And this video shows the exact moment several firefighters are blown back like debris as one of those natural gas tanks blows.
It was like they got blown back, and a lot of people was running out. They thought it was terrorists attacking us, or it was Russian people, and we're like, it's an explosion.
A closer look at the explosion in this video. To the left, watch it, you can, you can see what appears to be one of the firefighters being blown right over that green fence.
That is 49. Hey, hey, hey. We've had an explosion of a CNG truck. We've got multiple firefighters down.
The chilling sounds of LAFD radios, nine firemen down, rushed to the ER, two critically hurt, one of those airlifted to the burn center at LA General. From Skyfox, the injured firefighters' gear scattered all over the street, right where they went down. Doctors say they are all lucky to still be alive.
And frankly, it's remarkable that none of them were more severely injured after watching the footage.
Footage of this, a firebomb, sending debris flying blocks away, shaking the entire neighborhood.
Let's see if I can figure out how to get out of this one now. Can you see Mike? I can't see the lights. Is that it? David always comes to my rescue. He knows I'm not challenged, I'm very challenged on this.
But now, even hours later.
Very scary. We've been.
All right, so we can go back. All right, that's good. Thank you, David. So that kind of gives you an idea of, all right, that kind of gives you an idea of why that kind of, it was a very tense situation for us. Well, fast forward till last week, this is where seconds really counted. We were alerted for a wreck at the 52 to assist Roswell. They get a truck en route just as our truck is starting to get on Exit 62 to head south. We were able to divert our truck because we had a reported fire on the interstate. It was a break. It was a brake fire on a truck. Those are pretty standard, you know, that occurs. Typically, the brake fires stay within the brakes and the tires of the truck. This particular one didn't. We were able to get there quick enough to keep it from getting any further. This truck had between seven and nine thousand gallons of diesel fuel and gas. And it's, it might be a little loud, so I apologize, but this is just a short video. There's two things I want you to see, just how fast the fire grows, and we have the interstate shut down. I want you to watch the traffic that goes around us. We have five or six vehicles that go around us while we're there. When you ask why we take so many trucks, it's to protect us, it's to protect the people that are broken down or the people we're out there to see. We have to protect ourselves, because no one else is watching out. They're too busy to get in where they're going, so, but this is just a short video. I won't make you watch the whole thing, this is about five minutes, just, they'll just watch a few. I'll fast forward just a little bit, if I can show you one of the vehicles going around. But it took a little while to get this fire out. If you could see the pictures I have of the side of the truck, we were very fortunate that this didn't rupture on us. It took a little while to get other manpower there, so we were working with a short crew because we had diverted other people to the other incident. But this turned out the best way it possibly could, and that was because we had the quick response, and that's because we had the staff there. So thank you for helping us get to that point. We can't stop there. We have enough manpower for right now that we're making it. As things grow, we're going to have to grow. Other departments are going to need assistance as well. This is an issue across the county, across the US. But know that what you started so far is really making a difference. And where you go forward with this, you can continue to make differences. And basically, we just wanted to thank you for your help. So if you have any questions for us, we're here. I'm going to try to exit out of this thing, so I can close it out, so. But even if you don't have anything here that you want to talk about, if you want to come by the station and talk to us, be glad to talk with you.
I just want to congratulate you all on decreasing your response time, and I was just curious as to, you know, what goes into decreasing the time, the way y'all decrease?
Basically, having the staff there, because before, we were having to respond to the station, get trucks out. So that really puts a huge damper on your time, so that's cut out a lot of it. There's also, it's great to watch our crews start to get together and work as a team. I always used to shut the door on the truck, because my daddy said, don't leave the barn door open. They're leaving the door open, and they're putting their gear next to it, and it's, you can see how much faster they get as they start, like, well, I don't have to spend the two seconds to open the door, and you're like, well, how, two seconds, does that really make a difference? Well, when we start talking about a minute and thirty seconds, it does. So they've been doing a lot of things that have made that number continue to go down, and we expect that to continue to drop.
Thank you. Well, there's two things that Mr. T. Melton had mentioned. The compressed gas trucks, you could obviously see whose truck that was, the up and down the interstate delivering packages. The other thing is, I don't know if you see one of the trucks that deliver snack foods, tractor-trailer trucks, they're compressed gas. A company in Charlotte runs those, and there's just a lot of compressed gas out there on the interstate. That tanker, if it blew up, and we've had two of these, the first time, the truck was upside down and leaking fuel, but it didn't catch on fire. Those two guys would have not survived, and you saw a lot of courage. Just like Mr. Hester mentioned about the two police officers killed in Minnesota, the paramedic firefighter was going to their aid, and he was killed. It's hard to put this in perspective if you've never done it. And the volunteers in this county need all of our support. A paid guy is a paid guy, and you can tell him what to do. But the volunteers can cut those pagers off and not respond. We have to make, we support the volunteers in this county.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Melton, for that. All right. Next is number ten, executive session. So we're going to need a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters regarding county administration.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Guy?